Roll call?
Yes, please. Roll call, sorry.
Okay. Bonnie McInerney Slater, absent. Deborah Addy here. Dennis Shemansky.
Excused.
Joanne Chirky.
Here.
Joe Bozzi, maybe.
On his way.
Samantha Burnham.
Excused.
Brian Tupper.
Here.
I always had heard of her name.
I approve.
There he comes.
Yay!
There he goes. So approval or amendments to the agenda?
Good thing you got your head on. Okay, sorry.
Approval or amendments to the agenda?
I motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to approve it?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Approval of the minutes from the meeting June 15, 2022.
I move to approve.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Zoning Board preface. The Clay Township Zoning Board of Appeals, or ZBA, primarily addresses practical difficulty based on lot size, location, shape, or contour and/or location of existing buildings. We are guided by Section 27.05 of Ordinance Number 126. There are five members on the ZBA, four of whom are present tonight. At least three members vote affirmatively, must vote affirmatively, for your motion to grant a variance. Three members constitute a quorum. Each appeal before the ZBA will have a public hearing, at which time the applicant will first present his or her case, and a public comment regarding that issue will follow. During this time, members of the board may ask questions of clarification. If a particular point gets belabored, the chairperson has the right to limit comments. When the public hearing is closed, the board will move on to the deliberation of the particular variance request. If the applicant should disagree with the board's decision, he or she has the right to take it to Circuit Court within 30 days of the decision. When your hearing is concluded, you are welcome to leave or stay as you wish. All right, so I'd like to open up new business, and on this, I'm going to read. For the first one, we have a clarification on a site improvement of 7273 Audubon. It is a covered porch, not a shed, as publicly noted. It still is requesting that seven-foot variance. The setback for the R2 district is 55 from the seawall. The proposed setback from the covered porch is 48.65, or 48.16 feet. It's a clerical topographical error, and it was approved by the plan or two for us to continue versus republificizing that. So it's just a same variance, just it's a covered porch versus a shed.
Okay.
Okay? So with that said, we're going to go to item JZBA 2022-013 at 7273 Audubon. If the person or the representative would please come up, state your name and address, and tell us what the variance is about.
Yeah, hi. My name's Matt Stanley. Address is 7273 Audubon Street. We're looking for a variance of seven feet onto the setback. It's, I kind of, I put it in the write-up, but there's multiple houses within the 55 feet. I think I attached about five or six pictures, but two things that I kind of felt were, you know, for the setback. My neighbor's house that the side where the seven-feet encroachment is, his house sits about five feet back. I measure it's five and a half feet that sit back, so really, for your line of sight, it's only two feet to the side where there's seven feet. There are multiple properties on our street, as well as on the, I don't know what they call it, the Isles Canal, that are within the setbacks. There's an empty lot to the north of us, too, which would be no issue with any site changes or anything like that. This is a, it's a patio and porch. It's up against the house. It comes off the house, about 14 feet. It's a length of the house. You can't see it from the street. You'd only be able to see it from, you know, from the canal side of the house, so it's not obstructing either north or south side or the setback. I think, you know, I just was looking for the consistency with the other lots. There is something that's going up that I know was approved that's well within the 15 feet that must have been approved by the, you know, by a variance with that, so we were kind of looking for the same consideration.
Okay. Hold right there. Is there anyone else? Open up public comment on this? Anyone who wishes to speak? We don't have any letters? I didn't see any letters on this one. All right, we have closed public comment. Just in case we have a question, that's why I tried to keep you up there. So it's just a covered porch coming out from the house 14 feet, but you're encroaching...
I do have my architect here who drew the plans, so if you want specifics about the design, he's here to...
No, not...
No, but it is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So just it's coming within the 55 feet by seven feet?
Correct. Yeah, it's actually the 55, it encroaches seven feet into the 55 feet, so it's actually, on the one side, it's only two feet, because the lot's not completely square. So it's two feet on the north side of the lot, seven feet on the other side of the lot, just because the angle of the seawall, you know, there's, I have, just, you know, it's kind of like this, so there's a little discrepancy, but it's two feet on the north side, seven feet on the south side. The south side's where the other, my neighbor's house is. I actually did talk to him, and he had no problems with the porch. I told him about my plans, where I showed him the design, and he was fine with it. So I did talk to the neighbor, so he didn't have any issue with it. I didn't bring any documentation of that, but I did have verbal conversation with him multiple times, actually. I just, you know, I just wanted to be...
That's what they all say, right?
It is what they all say. I'm sure they did. I could have brought it, I should have probably run and got it, so...
All right, can I just, I'm going to ask the building inspector one question. Gary, could you step up for me for one second? I want a clarification, Gary, on, when he said the side, like the side site views, the view, I want to make sure that that's not in the play on this one. We're only dealing with the 55 feet, correct?
Correct.
Nothing on side view, nothing, okay.
Correct.
I was just going to say that, all right. That was my only clarification I had, you know. No. Any questions for Gary? Any questions for the homeowner?
Is this a enclosed porch or just a covered porch?
Covered.
Your view, the view is just straight anyway.
Correct. Well, I wanted to make sure that's what we were dealing with.
Yeah, there won't be any sidewalls on it. It's all, it's complete, it's open on both sides.
There is a deck there now?
Yeah, there is.
And it's in the encroachment already, right?
It already is, but, yeah, there's a deck that's 14 feet already. That's kind of, you know, until I got the denial from the township, I went off the 14 feet off the existing plans, because there's a deck out there already that's almost, it's 20 by 14, so it's almost half or plus, a little more than half of the existing plan that we have out there.
You're going to take that deck off?
Yes.
Any questions for Gary? He's standing there so politely. Thank you. The Bird Streets are always going to be improving.
Yes, and I think it's a good idea, especially if he's got a whole new deck there. It's going to make it nice.
Well, they're all nice, you know, I think they're all nice, it's just, again, they're all going to start getting improved, for sure.
Yep. Well, I make a motion to... I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll support it.
All right, so we have a motion and support to approve, pretty much as written?
Yes.
But a covered porch, not a shed, of course. Roll call, please.
I'm going to call who's here.
Yep, this is Joe.
Joseph Bozzi?
Yes.
Joanne Chirky?
Yes.
Deborah Addy, yes. Brian Tupper?
Yes. Motion approved. Okay, so we'll move on. I'll give you a second to write. This right here is, as written, covered porch versus shed. Just a... If it was denied, I'd make you write more.
Okay, hold on one second.
All right, I'll slowly go forward. The next one is JZBA 2022-11 at 8400 South Channel. Would the representative please come up, state your name, and... While you're here.
My name is Kurt Lawler, and so the, I'm the property owner of 8400, 8404, and 8414. So I think that's maybe relevant for this conversation. As you're aware, the 18,000-square-foot R1-1 family ordinance requires 18,000 minimum square feet. I tore down the property at 8400 during the winter of 2021, and then actually, I think the beginning of 2022. And with that said, there remained a garage and a boathouse. And I guess I didn't really think through that issue, but when it came up, I guess the boathouse was there. And as you know, you're not allowed to have an accessory structure without a main residence. So what I'm trying to do here is a practical solution for this, is I'm trying to move 2,500 square feet from 8400 to the property at 8414, which will allow me to then keep the accessory structure and have a garage and a boathouse for the property at 8414, which currently doesn't have one. And so I went through a few different options, I mean, different ways to combine and move the properties around and kind of resolve this issue with my demolition permit. And this one seemed to be the most practical solution, where I'm going to have two properties on the island side, which are accessible by bridge, and then there'll be one standalone property on the 8414 side, which is the roadside. And before, the lots are kind of goofy. 8400 had a lot that was on the island side, and then has this little sliver of land on the roadside of the harbor, which is, I'm proposing to move to 8400 in this request. So I think you have all the documentation on this, but really, I'm looking to get the property to be approved by being 16,139 square feet instead of 18,000, so it's just shy 1,861 square feet. So I'm not making this request to bill the property or, you know, do anything different to how it aesthetically looks currently. I'm just trying to resolve the issue of an accessory structure without a main house and kind of keep the property as it is and enjoy the use of the property and the boathouse as it stood for 60-plus years. So I think you have the documentation and the photos. Hopefully, that it makes sense with the three properties. Did they give you the photos that I submitted?
Is that square footage? Oh, include the canal?
I believe so, yes. I think it is on the variance. Although, let me look, actually. No, that's a good question. And the other thing is, 8400 does not have, is a landlocked property currently, and so that's one big thing of why I want to do this, too, is for the future. It's really going to eliminate a problem. 8400's always been landlocked, and 8404 has an easement to cross 8414 to get to South Channel, and as part of this, as I've written into the documentation, you'll see that there is a legal easement now provided for for 8400, so it'll be a great solution for whatever may happen to the property in the future. Currently, right now, I have no intentions of getting rid of any one of the properties. I don't plan on selling any of them, I guess, until, you know, the day I maybe decide to leave the island, if, you know, whenever that may be, if ever. So right now, I'm just going to have that as a vacant lot and use it as an extension of my yard on 8404. I'll be to answer your question. Yeah, I think, let me see. Let me look at the survey here again. I guess it does, which, you know, I look at that maybe as a positive for if 8400, you know, wherever not to be owned by me, I mean, they still have room for obviously proper dockage, and if they wanted to do their own type of boathouse and things like that in the future. The lot size is pretty similar to 8404, so I mean, I think there's adequate room for a septic and everything like that, if that's what the concern was.
I was just wondering if the...
Yeah, I think, that's what it looks like from the drawing, yes.
The 16,000 square feet include the canal?
It looks like it does on the drawing, yes.
I'm not sure if that's, I mean, what the ordinance or the residential is supposed to include or not. I'm just bringing up the point. I know he added this bridge. I can see that.
Well, the bridge, the bridge has always been there. What I, that is actually just, it was an old railroad type bridge, and my children were just getting a lot of splinters and things. All that is is just new decking board over the old bridge, so that is not a new, new bridge to the property. Everything's just been redone. It's been a long, long project here, so...
Did you get a notice because you only got accessory building on a non-lot?
What happened was, you know, like I said, I didn't really, this didn't come up, I guess, until a little bit recently, but I applied for a, obviously, demolition permit that, you know, I did the proper grading, seawall repairs, raised the lot, you know, sod, everything I was supposed to do, and then I, I think to get the $1,000 bond back or whatever came up, that, I think it was from the, I think it was from the building inspector, I got a notice that said that, hey, you left a, you left a building on there. I was like, oh, jeez, I didn't, you know, didn't think through that one. And so there is a garage there, and that's when I found out about it, so they're just holding the $1,000 bond. So I talked to the treasury department here. We went through a bunch of different solutions on, you know, I could even make the sliver smaller, you know, we were just moving stuff. It was, you know, I own all three properties. I'm just trying to move the things around a little bit to make it, to make it work for everybody and, you know, and use the property as, as I'd like to, and not at the expense and the headache, I guess, of, you know, demolishing another structure.
Were you required to, I'm sorry, excuse me?
I was just wanting to ask any of these questions for the future of the lot.
Yeah, I agree. That's why I think adding the easements is going to be a good thing for it, so I think it's a positive, I hope.
Did you have to condemn the septic that was there? Did you have to fill it in, or is it still there?
It is not there, and to my understanding from the contractor, they actually never found one.
Nope.
And the entire foundation was removed, so I mean, it, we dug super deep. They, I think, from a history perspective, I think that house might have been on pilings. There was a ton of rebar, been about 10 feet wide of concrete. It was a, you know, I did it properly. I removed all of the foundation, brought in all the dirt. It was, it was a very expensive project, unfortunately, but there was no septic found.
And these were never all combined?
The three properties?
Yeah.
No. No, the, you know, I first moved to the island, it's a cottage like four years ago, and so 8404 was my cottage, and that was the only property I ever planned to have on the island, and then the woman behind me that had moved on and decided to sell, and they owned all the property in front of, in front of my house that has an easement, and it was a real, it's just a hassle to drive over and park over the bridge, and so I think it was a couple of years ago that that came up and acquired that property, and then just last year, the gentleman had passed away, and then that property came up, and I passed on it the first time, but it came back anyways. Long story short, I would have never thought I had three properties on the island in the last four years or so, but that's, they've never been combined now. I've just acquired them over the last four years.
Yeah, I just wanted to let him finish. I was just absorbing it all. All right, I'm going to open up the public to this. Any public comment regarding this issue? Going to close it? Close public? Gary, could you come up for one second? You can say that one.
Yes, sure.
Just want to clarify, we're only, he's only here because of the shortfall of the property, 18,000 to 16,000, correct? There's no other things that we're, we're not approving, any land switching, nothing like that. We're just approving that it's...
As far as I'm aware, yeah. You know, he's looking to reconfigure this property so that he can keep his existing accessory structures instead of taking those down. So, I mean, he explained it very well, that he's just trying to reconfigure things, and one of the lots will now fall short of the 18,000 requirement. I mean, that's why he's here. By, you know, not, I guess, approving this, then we probably have no other choice but that those accessories have to come down, or he has to build a structure, you know, a primary structure on that parcel. You know, this is primarily assessing and their requirements, not so much me, but I'll answer whatever questions I can for you.
Yes, and then the parcel that is going to be short, that 18,000, is that going to be a buildable lot? Or they'd have to go in front of us eventually to build on that as well?
Well...
Are we creating a hardship on that part?
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, too.
I mean, we creating another problem, helping him, but five years from now, creating another issue for maybe something else.
Well, once you grant the variance to be less than 18, then it doesn't become an issue. If you look at 16,000-square-foot lot, you know, we build on far less than that.
That's what I was getting at.
But it goes with the land.
And, you know, so even with lot coverages, and even if you take just an average 2,000 square-foot home, put some accessory structures on it, you're at, what, 10% maybe? You know, of what the lot coverage is, so that doesn't even come into play unless you build a mansion, but...
Perfect. Perfect.
Yeah, and I think the house that was there, they set up a head full upstairs. I mean, it would have been like a 4,000-square-foot home. I mean, it was, it had a huge footprint on that property, and there wasn't, that's where the residence was, you know, for decades, on that lot, which would, I would hope would be buildable, yes.
I mean, I do like that you're creating another easement to it. I like that it's not going to be full of red tape later. I just was worried that we just made a unbuildable lot, but no, okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
The sliver of land that's good that I'm proposing to move, to be honest, that was just where, you know, there might be a car there or two. There wasn't a septic there. There wasn't any type of residence on that side of the lot. It was actually a goofy cut, and the property actually goes right through, the cut goes right through the parking lot, and it was always a contentious issue with those neighbors in the past of, because if you were even to park there, it's like, well, the back three feet of my car is hanging over the property line, you know?
Yeah.
And it was, everybody, it was a mess, and so that's why, I think it's a great solution to have the two on the island side and one on the main side, and everybody's, everybody knows where their property lines are in the future.
It's just a different thing to come to us, that's why. I was just, it's a little, just want a little bit more clarification before, so... All right, perfect. I'm good. Anything, questions for these guys? Okay.
Well, a couple of things. I think that if we decided to approve it, I think that this easement has to be part of it.
It is in the legal, in the description I proposed, the easement is included within that from BMJ, the surveyors.
Is that the transferred parcel?
That's, well, they've written it on there. They put it on the chart, and then I think it's also, it's in that legal description. That was part of this. Let me see here.
Just say it in your motion. I get it. I agree with you on it.
Was this a satisfied Chari then? Chari's the accessory department then?
Chari's our, yeah, she's our assessor.
Yeah, she approved.
Yeah, she's the one that proposed. She gave me a few, a few solutions.
Yeah, I spoke with her today about it, too.
This was the easiest one, because the other one was like, well, you can combine, you know, your house with the other one, but then it's like, in the future, I only have two lots, you know, and I don't know what I want to do in the future, so...
And that's why I was preparing for the future, too.
Yeah, I agree.
I didn't want to just sit there and have another nightmare.
To be honest, someday, you know, not anytime soon, but maybe I will build there someday, and children can be next door. I don't know.
I'll make a motion to approve it, based on this 10-foot-wide easement. It does create a problem for this piece of property, and I think it'll straighten it out.
I'll support.
Based on the easement, I mean...
Well, because the easement is what would cause a problem for this lot if it's not in place, because there's no easement here. The easement's for this one.
Correct, okay.
So this piece would be landlocked without that easement.
Okay.
Because here's the road.
No, I got that part. I just was trying to understand how you... Okay, so we have a motion and support. Roll call, please.
Joe Bozzi?
Yes.
Joanne Chirky?
Yes.
Deborah Addy, yes. Brian Tupper?
Yes. Granted.
Okay, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Five minutes. No, two.
This is a good picture.
Yeah. Right across from my mother-in-law's, I think. I think so. Any of those are nice, though. You know? But I didn't want to, that's why I am glad it's still a nice lot.
Yeah. The Benson.
All right, so we'll go on to the next new business, JZBA 2022-012 at 7867 Stark Road. Representative, come up, state your name and address, and while you're here.
My name's Tim Charlin at 7846 Stark Drive. I was here three or four months ago before the ZBA for the house setback, and basically, I was told that I had to do it on a diagonal from one neighbor to the other, and I want to put a second-floor deck on, and it's going to go in front of that setback, basically. And there's going to be like four posts, and they're going to be higher than the ceiling, and the building inspector couldn't approve that, basically. My understanding is, because I'm going to go out in front of that, and I, I don't know, just because there's a couple posts and stuff, if it's going to be allowed or not, and if you can put a boathouse out there on the canal, I don't think three posts would be obstructing anyone's view or anything like that.
So it's just a deck, not a covered porch underneath?
Well, you got a deck downstairs, and then you have a second-floor deck. There's a lot of boat traffic. You got that cabana blue now, so it'd be nice to sit up there and be able to look at the boats and everything, so that's kind of what I'm trying to do. I see both my neighbors are here, too, so...
Perfect. All right, hang on. Well, yeah, you might as well sit. All right, I'll open up public comment on this. Please state your name and address, please.
My name's Brent Myers, and I'm at 7863 Stark Drive, and I'm opposed to it, so I'm just to the east of him, and, and he did, he wants to build out, he wants to build a second-story deck. He's got a main floor, a main-floor deck, and now he wants a second-story deck that's going to exceed 12 foot out, probably past the setback, past the straight-line setback, and my house is another three foot back, so that's going to extend 15 feet out past my house. So again, like what Tim said, we were, we went through this in January about the setback rules, and it was pretty clear how that was all going to go, so if you, there's a few things going here. It's like, it's, if you start allowing people to go past that setback, then you got to allow everybody to do it, to do it, you know? So I'm kind of a... So I, I'm kind of, I'm opposed to it. It's just, it's, it's too far out. It's just too far out. It's too big of a deck back there, so, and, and that's how I feel.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please state your name and address, please.
Scott Walgrave, seven-eight-seven-three Stark Drive. I am just the house west of Tim's house. I oppose to it also. He literally have a deck over the top of my deck within seven feet. But I know I can't make this personal, so I just want to thank you for a couple years ago, when you guys all passed a law to build in straight line with your neighbors. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Now, hang on a second. Is it your deck that's out past that street line setback right now?
Yes. That was existing when I bought the house twenty-nine years ago, twenty-eight years ago.
I'm just seeing it on Tim's drawing, that's why.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this issue?
Penny Walgreen, seven-eight-seven-three Stark Drive. I am to the west of Tim, and I'm opposed of it because I don't feel anything needs to be that high and towering down on me or the other neighbors in the neighborhood. And we already went through the setback with them. And I feel that's what should be done, is keep the setback with this deck as part of the house. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish? You're the last one? No? Okay. I'm going to close public comment on this issue. So remember he came before us? You guys remember that?
Yeah.
Okay. As far as the height goes, that's up to the building inspector, you know, with the height, you know, if he's got a tall house, that's, that is what it is, you know, with the, you know, the height, looking over another person's house, I don't see that being an issue right now, you know?
Yeah, because the original variance was for the house, and this is...
I still think he's, you know, I said it in the past, I think the one house, the neighbor, the gentleman's, is setback far and, you know, which causes this major line.
Which we, I think we said it was an older house, and if it ever got tore down, it could come up.
No, no, it can't come up now. That's, that's, you know, it's hurt him, too. You know, and the other neighbor has a deck that's already sticking past the setback. It's a fifty-fifty here. I know, I know the neighborhood's upset on us and glad that we made this rule, but I'm...
Yeah.
Development's going to continue, I think.
I see the rule with the house, but the deck, I don't see why...
It's not enclosed, it's four posts, three posts, four posts, I'm sure it's at least four.
Looks like there's one on the bottom, too.
Well, it's a, it's a deck, I mean... Again, right, the, the lower deck, there's nothing there. It's this poster here that's in the ground.
So there's the house in the corrected line, except for there's a deck?
Correct.
I can't tell how big this is, how much it's coming out.
Tim, how far is that deck coming out? Twelve feet?
Twelve feet. Twelve.
This house right here is setback far.
How much would he be approaching, though? It's definitely an approach.
Well, he's coming past it. You know, you're not allowed to go past that. Coming out twelve feet, but he's still going to, I mean, from his original, I think he's still short where he should have or could have been able to build thirty-some feet. He could have went closer. But with that straight-line setback rule, which helps the whole, be uniform down the street, I don't, I don't know. I don't see a problem with the deck sticking out past. The neighbors have the view straight out the property. The house is conforming to the setbacks. I don't think a deck is going to interfere with the situation of the road.
Right, I mean, when you live on the water, you want to look at the water, and you want to see all the boats go flying and stuff. Yeah. I mean, we've already, like you said, he's back as far as he could be.
He's got the house back.
I can't make a motion.
I make a motion, I'll prove it based on the lot and the, just the post or the...
Let me pull up Gary, let me pull up Gary one, one quick. Gary, can you just answer? I mean, you could probably do it right from there. It's the post that is the, the issue?
Well, how it's written out, there's two things that come into play here. Yes, a straight-line setback, which was moved back, the house moved back to stay within that. We also have unobstructed view area of the yard, which is now anything heading towards the water is all unobstructed view. So is it just three posts? Probably that's it. But the way that the ordinance is written and the way that I have to enforce it says that we have to keep the footprint, everything behind that line. But yeah, realistically, you do. You're, you have three posts. Anything else up above is not going to be obstructing anyone's view, but that's my opinion. So, yeah, three posts, but, but we do have, like, I know you brought the attention of the neighbor's deck. Inside of that unobstructed, unobstructed view, you can have a structure up to three feet above grade and still be okay and comply with that unobstructed view. This is higher, and it may be the other spectrum of being obstructed, but that's how the unobstructed view says, is nothing higher than three foot.
So looking at this, and I'm not trying to downplay the situation, and post versus a full enclosure, which obviously he's not asking for a full enclosure because he did before in his house, we wouldn't allow that. So it is just the post, though?
Yes, and, you know, if you want to make sure that, that, that lower deck that's also being installed is never enclosed, that might be something that...
Well, it can never be enclosed. It couldn't, you know what I mean? It could never be enclosed, right? I mean...
Right, because then it would be in violation of the straight-line setback.
I just wanted to make sure that we're on the post side of the thing. Thank you, thank you. I was afraid if it ever got enclosed, it was, you know, illegal. It is illegal no matter what, but he would have to go in front of the ZBA or again to enclose it. But right now, we are looking at posts. We just, that was it. I just, I wanted to make sure we're clear on that.
I got it.
So, Joe, could you say it one more time?
I make a motion to approve it based on the visual form of the visual line being only the posts and the practicality of the narrow lot size giving him the optimum view of the water.
I'll support it.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve, we'll just say it as written, and, and your reasonings, and support. So rule call, please.
Okay. Brian Trappa.
Yes, I'm usually the last, though, but yes.
Deborah Addy, yes. Joanne Chirky.
Yes.
Joseph Bozy.
Yes.
Motion granted.
Check.
Give you a second, or did you get it?
Um, I was waiting while we were talking.
All right. We don't have any additional new business. We'll go to unfinished business. I don't have any.
Motion to adjourn.
Not yet. Report from planning commission?
We had three things come before us. Atkins Burgers came in. They wanted a site plan review for storage in the back. They wanted to have one of those, what the heck is it, a, what do you call those? A storage container, thank you.
Refrigerator, oh.
Yeah, no, no refrigeration, just a pod, so he can put whatever he wants in there. So we did go ahead and approve that, and they should be opening sometime soon. He didn't want to open before the Fourth of July.
Okay.
They are working, they being our planner, is working on our zoning ordinance changes, and I think that's going to the board pretty soon. I think they have to have... Pardon? Public hearing, yeah.
Next week.
Okay, next week, okay. The week after? Yeah. I didn't see it in their minutes, so they must have pushed it. So that's going to be in two weeks. Then we had a field road property, it's a special land use, room to run. We set up a public hearing on that. What, that company is a, like a babysitter for dogs, so, and so we set the public hearing for that.
What are they going for? I mean, we, we granted them a variance.
They have to have, their site plan was submitted.
Okay.
They had to look at all the buildings and make sure they complied with all the building departments' requests, and so now they've done that, and so now, you know, we set the public hearing for them.
Okay.
And that's about it.
Perfect, thank you. Any public comments? Not hearing any public comments, I will...
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.